For the call meeting in order, I just want to thank all of you supervisors and staff for being here. I was great to see staff smiles on their face. I just have to say yesterday, we had some real tough technical difficulties. But hopefully by Chris be working here almost all day, he got it going with hope. So, all right. Our call meeting in order is the Pecah County Board of Supervisors, Tuesday, March 15. Go, please.
Mr. Ellis. Ms. Newman.
No, thank you.
We have 26 present, one vacant.
Or Christie has the opening meeting statement of legally fulfilled.
It has.
Thank you. As we stand this morning for a moment of silence and thoughts and prayers. For the flag, just please remember our good people who pray, they're hustling to get out. And some that aren't getting out. They really need our thoughts and prayers for sure. Please stand.
I'd like to switch to the flag. United States of America, in this regard, we are a nation of persons with individual identity or source.
Thank you so much. Remember that, sure on my phone. Is it no bothersome? Is it bothersome that you're an echo, echo, echo?
It is.
Yeah, we'll continue now. Okay. Okay. Okay, we like the motion to approve the agenda, please. Supervisor Moore.
Will we approve, approve, approve the agendas presented?
We're in the motion by supervisor Moore to approve the agendas presented. Do we have a second?
I got a second.
I heard second. Questions or discussion?
Last chance to vote. That passes 26 to zero.
Okay, we have the minutes of the meeting of February 15, 2022. We like a motion for that approval, please. Supervisor Sperrings.
I saw a move.
There is a motion by supervisor Sperrings to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Supervisor Wodgowski.
I second that motion.
And then second by supervisor Wodgowski. Any questions or discussion? That's all.
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Okay, we're down resolutions number seven, seven A is resolution number 47, 2021 dash 2022. Amendment to chapter 45.
Now therefore let it be resolved that the Pecah County Board of Supervisors adopts and ordnance amended that comprehensive plan. That as originally adopted in ordinance number 45 and has been from time to time amended as follow. See attached documents.
The motion for approval. Supervisor Dog.
Who can prove that?
Motion by supervisor Dog to approve. Supervisor Buzz Quest.
I'll second that.
Second by Buzz Quest. Any questions or discussion? That's all.
Excuse me, I have requests.
I'm sorry.
Can Ryan explain that question?
Sure, he's coming right up here. He's driving.
So when the, the match are coming up on here, I'll just very quickly go over what this is. So this is we're amending a comprehensive plan. This is a two-fold amendment. So we have one amendment taking place in Tonto Lary and the other is in the town of Makua. So the first one in the town of Lary. This property right here is currently planned as being commercial. And what they're looking at doing is doing some lot, a lot of adjustments. And in order to be able to do that, the lots need to all be the same zoning district. And so you'll see later on in the agenda here, we have some zone app events that are going to be taking place. But in order for those zone app events to take place, you need to first change the comprehensive plan to allow for those zone app events. And so it is this one specifically, the town of Lary. This, this area here needs a change from commercial to agriculture to allow for subsequent zone app events to agriculture. And the second one. In the town of Makua, this point here is an expansion of existing business. And so what they're looking at doing is going, you can kind of see the dotted line here is where the existing parcel is. And so the, it's that buffer area going outside of it is where this business is expanding onto. And so what they're looking at doing is having that area of expansion being associated with the original parcel. Again, in order to do that, they need to be the same zoning district. The original parcel is zoned industrial. And so we need to change the comprehensive plan for that buffer area around it. From the, from the, I think it's agriculture to industrial to allow for the, the result.
Do we have the discussion? No discussion? That's all.
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Next, we'll go on to resolution number 48, 2021, that 2022. Fuel stock grant.
Now therefore be it resolved, Wapaka County will meet the financial obligations necessary to fully and satisfy. Totally complete the grant funded project and hereby authorize and empowers. The Parks and Solid Waste Director to act on behalf of Wapaka County to submit an application to the state of Wisconsin. Department of Natural Resources for any financial aid that may be available. Enter into an agreement and contract as appropriate. Submit required reports to the DNR to satisfy the agreement contract as appropriate. Submit reimbursement requests to the DNR for the agreement contract. Cite and submit other documents as necessary to complete the project per the agreement contract. And for the result, Wapaka County will comply with all local, state, and federal rules and regulations and ordinances. Related to the projects as directed in the cost share agreement contract.
Your motion for approval. Supervisor Buzz Quest.
Almost confirmed.
There's a motion by supervisor Buzz Quest to approve. Supervisor Golden.
I second it.
And a second by supervisor Golden. Discussion? Questions? By experience.
Yes, I'd like to just comment on that. That's a handicap dock going to be put down near Gill's Landing. And what that does is it just complements the one that city put in. And why we got just below the dam. Which ours last year got used quite heavily. The problem being handicap dock like that, people got into it and it went direct to Gill's Landing. But once they got to Gill's Landing, there was no place for them to get out of the water. So actually, this is a real compliment to ours and it's a definite compliment to this county park system because. It just completes that whole route. And it does get used a lot back last weekend. There was like a dozen people went down that river already. It's amazing how often it gets used. So I really appreciate that county is coming up with this. Thank you.
Making this experience very nice. Any questions?
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Then we're down to a resolution number D. D, I mean, we have a number of famous people here who want to retire. I thought I was going to say a little about everyone, but. Between Pat Craig and Dennis Christman, we got to be out here by one. I'll keep that for a little later. So this is resolution number 45, 2021, dash 2022. Add trade repair. The motion for approval? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Now therefore be it resolved that Wapaka County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Supervisor Craig for her years of faithful and exceptional services. And wish her continued success and happiness in the years to come.
All right, go ahead and go and do make a motion, Pat. Supervisor Hardy.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Hardy to approve. Supervisor Nygaard.
Second.
Second by Supervisor James Nygaard. Any questions or discussion? Yes, Pat.
Thank you. Twenty-seven elected county board supervisors representing the 51,812 citizens of Wapaka County is a highlight of my life. It is an honor to serve the people of District 18 on the Wapaka County Board. And I would like to say thank you to them and to everyone who has voted for me in the past. I treasure being on the board as a representative of the township of Royalton, later adding part of the Little Wolf Township. During the 26 years on the board, I enjoyed serving on many different committees. And getting to know all the past and present county board supervisors. Our diversity is our strength. We all bring different talents to this board. Thank you all to the department heads, staff, and employees who have helped me. You answered my questions, educated me on issues, and made my time on the board a gratifying experience. Together, we serve the citizens of Wapaka County to make the county a great place to work and live. I appreciate all your past, present, and future efforts to continue to serve the county. I wish you all continued success and happiness in years to come. I abstain from voting on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pat. We just have to tell you too, thanks for all the education you gave us. Been around for 24 years and I thank you with the 26. I just have to tell you, you should talk to me a lot about proofing. Okay, we have a motion for approval. If you're ready. Any other questions? That's all.
Last chance to vote.
Yeah. Right, Craig, it looks like we're, we got hats.
Yes. Think we're going to have to revote, I'm sorry. Brett.
Just having a bit cry in the bathroom.
Yes. Last chance to vote. That carries 25 to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. And to go on to resolution number 50, 2021 dash 2022, Joyce Boyer repair.
Now therefore be it resolved that Wapaka County Board of Supervisors hereby commence Supervisor Boyer for her years of faithful and exceptional services. And wish her continued success and happiness in the years to come.
We need a motion first. Supervisor Mark. Mark most approve that. Most approve to approve. Federwitz.
Supervisor Federwitz, second that motion.
And Supervisor Federwitz, second the motion of Joyce Boyer repair.
I agree, but.
I agree with everything Pat said. I will miss you all. I live only eight blocks from here, so I might just pop in sometime and sit in the back. But thank you, and I will be abstaining also.
And Joyce, I just want to say that I served with your husband here. I'm sure he read on his legacy so very well.
It was supposed to only be third year, but then it was nine years.
Thank you. Okay. That's all.
Last chance to vote. That carries 24 to zero with two abstaining.
Okay, next we go on to resolution number 51, 2021 dash 2022, Mary Kay Pullman's retirement.
Now therefore be resolved that Wapaka County Board of Supervisors hereby commands Supervisor Pullman for her years of faithful and exceptional services. And wish her continued success and happiness in the years to come.
Just want to thank you, Mary Kay, for your service and for the many. Interest you had in improving our county board and our staff and certainly our Wapaka County. Thank you. Supervisor Gray.
Gray moves to approve with regret.
Supervisor Gray move to approve. Supervisor Golden.
I second.
Second by Supervisor Golden. Questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary Kay.
I like Pat. Wish to thank everyone also. It's been a pleasure to see to follow you. And as well as the staff, we have a great bunch of staff personnel for sure. And I wish you all happiness and good health.
Thank you so much, Mary Kay. Okay, next. Oh, yeah, we have to go on. Please go on.
Last chance. Last chance to vote. That carries 25 to zero with one abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, next we have resolution number 52, 2021, dash 2022, Mary Craig's retirement. Mary Craig's retirement, but. Very great. Yeah, but I just have to say, it was the shortest retirement ever. And I'm sure welcome to that very great. I tell people, don't ever retire, you'll never be happy. And you didn't even get retired and you weren't happy already. Okay, so we do have to take action, I guess, on this anyhow, so. Christie.
Now therefore be it resolved that Wapaka County Board of Supervisors hereby commence Supervisor Craig for her years of faithful and exceptional services. And wish her continued success and happiness in years to come.
The motion? Supervisor Mary Craig.
Well, I'm not retired yet, but I'm hoping to be back. I think I have some competition this year. So, um, if you know anybody that works in Bandler, town of Little Wolf, just haven't recognized my name in. So I'm doing a campaign, but I've been enjoying the time that I've been here. Thank you.
Supervisor Mark. Mark most approve, but I guess. Mark will be approved. Supervisor Nygaard.
I, I second it, I guess.
Okay, Supervisor Nygaard seconded. Please go on.
Last, last chance to vote. That passes. That passes 24 to one with three abstaining. 22 to one with three abstaining.
Next we have Resolution number 53, 2021 dash 2022, Mr. Dennis Questions Retirement.
Now therefore be resolved that Opaaca County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Supervisor Christman for his years of faithful and exceptional services and wish him continued success and happiness in the years to come.
Mr. Christman? All right, I'm sorry, I didn't want to shake your voice first. Need a motion first, Supervisor Buzz Quest.
Move to approve.
Most by Supervisor Buzz Quest to approve. Mr. Johnson, sir. Second by Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Mr. Hudson. I also like to echo Pat's comments. It's been a pleasure to serve citizens of Opaaca County on this board as well as the city council for this. Served 24 years here on this board. For that, served 27 and a half, sheriff's department. Retired from there. The other, I guess, adds up to about 51 and a half years. Driving back and forth to Clinton. Also, my wife informed me that she believes in tournaments.
Thank you, Dennis, for your service and being able to lay here. I, myself and Dennis go back a long way where he makes a city council for years, and he also is really responsible for my improvement at driving when I was a young man. And getting a number of license, a number of lessons, Jim says. And so I can mentor by kind of sort of. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Supervisor Nygaard.
Thank you. I, I want to thank Supervisor Christman in particular for mentoring me on the zoning committee. Very much appreciated. I, I will appreciate it and, and be thankful for it. I think the rest of my life. It's just, his, his level-headed approach and thoughtful approach to, to every situation is that example each set has really helped me on the zoning committee. And I just want to say that in front of the whole group. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Supervisor Dog.
I want to thank Dennis for leading our legislative judicial ethics and safety team. I served around there for the last 10 years. I think we could continue. Lead that committee as much as, as well as he did over the past several years. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Dog.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gary Murphy.
You were requested to speak, Supervisor Murphy.
I did consider vocalizing. Motion to approve. Others. Okay, that is done.
Okay, let's vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 25 to zero with one abstaining.
Okay, next we have Resolution number 54, 2021 dash 2022, Supervisor Terry Murphy's retirement.
Now therefore be resolved that the Opaaca County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Supervisor Murphy for his years of faithful and exceptional services and wish him continued success and happiness in the years to come.
Supervisor Dog.
I would recommend we accept that. But we'll miss Terry again on our legislative issue.
Thank you. Motion made by Supervisor Dog. Supervisor Federowitz.
I would certainly second that, and it was wonderful knowing you for a long time on our zoning committee.
Answer questions. Supervisor Nygaard.
I want to thank Terry for, for his contribution to zoning committee also. And we've had a lot of fun, too. And so, it's, it's not all work, and thank you, Terry.
Yes, thank you, Terry, and I just have to say that Mr. Murphy is my favorite Chicago cop. Well, I thought you said you were going back to work. And he became a pure guy, well, then, because he's a fan, so go ahead, Terry.
Listen, I don't want to say, this has been the highlight of my stay here at Opaaca County. Won't be here much longer, two more days, hopefully. You know, I want to thank everybody and everybody that helped him. One of my finest memories of this thing is the first time I met Jack Benny. He was one of the finest men I ever known. However, there's a little problem here. All these things you credited me with and this resolution were really Gerald Murphys.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anybody else? That's all. Vote.
Yes, Cousin Terry, I wish, wish to thank you for all those kind things that you've said and inviting me to golf up at Iowa.
Anybody else? Okay, now let's vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Okay, next we have Resolution number 55, 2021 dash 2022, Mr. Rob, Mr. Robert Ellis's retirement.
Now therefore be resolved that Opaaca County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Supervisor Ellis for his years of faithful and exceptional services and wish him continued success and happiness in the years to come.
We have a motion for approval. Supervisor McLone.
I'm gonna miss Bob. We go way back, 2010 is when I got appointed by Dick. Bob recommended me for the Highway Committee, but he and Gene Sarns were pretty much the two that helped me out the most when I got on the county board, because I didn't have a clue what was going on here. Thank you, Bob. Let's make that motion.
Okay, there is a motion by Supervisor McLone. Supervisor Nygaard.
I second that, and thank you, Bob.
Thank you. The motion is seconded. Any questions or discussion? Supervisor Ellis.
I keep on pushing a button and keep on saying things that I'm not sure what to say. Entertaining and supporting my community, contributing to whatever I can do. It's a sense of humor. Sometimes it was difficult to tell her things. Probably also tried to show probably 500 people in this room. But if anybody hasn't seen it, this might be. Episode from May of 1960. And when I found it on the internet five or six years ago, I was amazed that somebody would stick that thing on there. But ever since, it has been kind of my, my center of attention, so if anybody needs another look. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I just have to say that, that's another man that came up with the Chicago, where Chicago's Board of Craig for years, aren't you?
Chicago Board of Auctions Exchange, the Louvre Brother, the Board Tree.
Okay.
Sam Golden.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Seen none, let's vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 25 to zero with one abstaining.
Resolution number 56, 2021 dash 2022, Richie's Retirement.
Now therefore be resolved that Opaaca County Board of Supervisors hereby commend Supervisor Richie for his years of faithful and exceptional services and wish him continued success and happiness in the years to come.
Motion for approval. Supervisor Harry.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Supervisor Harry, Mr. Buzz Quest.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Buzz Quest. Comments? Reading?
I'd like to thank everyone here for giving me leadership. I found information from different departments that I thought was very helpful. This is going to be hopefully a short-term retirement. As I'm currently busy with other things in life, I'm hoping to come back in two to four years, however it works out for me. But I just want to thank everyone for all their time and helping me out. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussions? I just have to say, Mr. Richie, that, like, we never got the order, the order really well, but I know your first year, year on your first meetings, I think you got a little pick at me when you attempted to talk three times on a subject. And I'm sorry, that's just a rule that I have to rule out, like, recommended by this professional lady. And I'll never forget, I said, I knew you were gonna do that. I didn't promise that. I'm sorry, but I had to look. Okay, nobody else? Let's vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 25 to zero with one abstaining.
Wow, that was enough retirement here. Let's put the, plug in the dam here. Wow. Resolution number 57, 2021, a donation acceptance, K-9 donation.
Now therefore be resolved that the Opaaca County Board of Supervisors accept $1,000 from Fletcher Story Incorporated and $2,000 from Farmer Genius Campground for the purpose of supporting Opaaca County Sheriff's Office K-9 Unit.
Supervisor Craig.
Craig moves to approve.
There is a motion by Supervisor Craig for approval. Supervisor Harry.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Harry. Discussion questions? I have to comment, I just have to say thank you to those donating, they're keeping this fun going. You know how it all starts. It all starts with our Sheriff's Department. We got one of the finest Sheriff's Departments around, and they go out and do so many things for the community that I've never heard before. In fact, some of it's rough off the police departments around here, but we even, Clintonville are copying what Sheriff's Eminence men have done. So sure want to thank you for that. Any others? Please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Resolution number 58, 2021 dash 2022, Work Zone Safety Awareness Week.
Therefore be resolved by the Opaaca County Board of Supervisors that the week of April 11th through April 15th, 2022 be designated as Work Zone Safety Awareness Week in Opaaca County.
Supervisor Dog.
I move to approve that resolution.
Supervisor Dog moves to approve, of course.
I will second that. We have, when you look at the research on that, we can never be safe enough. It's scary what goes on when our highway department is on the highways. I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor McLone, thank you. I just have to say too, that I know personally, and Lenny of it, she do the that our Highway Commissioner, Nancy worked before, another county before he came here, was witness to such an accident that county. And that stuck with him forever, I think. So, thank you for that. Supervisor Craig.
I just want to say that yesterday, the county highway department was right by my house in front of it, and they were doing cleaning up of the right of ways. They were cutting the trees in the rush down, and then they were chopping it up and, and blowing it back into the ditch. And they had their signs on wonderfully, and they had the flagman out there, and I'm proud to report, at least while I was watching, that all of the traffic obeyed very carefully and going through that work zone and giving them the space that they needed to do the job that they get, because again, I wondered, oh my goodness. But 54 was very well taken care of by the employees that were with it, and I wanted to comment thank you to them.
Thank you, Supervisor Craig. You did a good job, flagging.
I was going to take them chocolate chip cookies, but I thought that would not be appropriate. They were busy working.
Any other comments? Okay, please vote.
Last chance to vote. That carries 26 to zero.
Next we have Resolution number 59, 2021 dash 2022. Salary of elected officials, put up a court and chair.
Now therefore be resolved by the Opaaca County Board of Supervisors that the total annual compensation for county elected officials under Wisconsin Statute 59.22 sub one is set as follows effective on the first day of term of office that begins after the date of this resolution.
A motion for approval. Supervisor Mark, Mark most approve, this present. Supervisor Mark, a motion to approve. Supervisor Gerald Murphy.
Supervisor Murphy seconded that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor Gerald Murphy. Questions? Supervisor Craig.
I'm speaking twice in a row, but being on finance committee, I know that we sent this forward. And I know that I voted to send it forward to the county board, but I also think it's fair to comment that he as the county board did not get the original salaries behind this. The sheriffs went up very little, while clerk of courts, I believe, went up almost three times that the sheriff got, I mean, the sheriff's 500, she was like 1,500. And I understand that he was at the top of the list and she was at the bottom. And I also understand that the other counties that he compared herself to did not have their final figures in. In other words, these were what they had been. So, and, and I understand totally that it's the office. It's not the person that we're giving it to. It's who decides to run for this office in the future. I feel that the sheriff of our county has done an excellent job. As you just stated, getting donations from the different businesses and individuals with the divines and the canines, and I hope that would excuse me, continue on. And I don't feel it appropriate that the salary is not raised accordingly like it was for the clerk of courts. So as the press always told me, Pat, tell us why you're voting no. That's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Craig. Supervisor Buzz Quest. Supervisor Buzz Quest.
I was gonna say the same thing that Pat did, that that the, I watched some of the meetings and the the reasoning behind the lower sheriff wage seemed to be more towards the person and not the position. And I want to commend Sheriff Wills. He brings his budget in on in on time and comes in on budget or under budget. And we, you know, we've all lived through past administrations that that was a tissue. I think he's done an outstanding job at proving that. So the reasons, you know, maybe I misreading a little bit, but it seems more geared towards a person than the position. And if there was financial reasons, solid financial reasons, I could understand it. But it's just a little murky for me, so I'm gonna have to go with no.
Thank you Supervisor Buzz Quest. Supervisor Ed Gray.
I hate to leave the meeting just having it being an ordinary meeting. So I will propose to amend this to give the sheriff the same increase that we gave to the clerk of courts in his first year of that on. If there's a second, fine. If there isn't, it dies.
Okay. Supervisor Boyer.
Yes, I was just wondering how much of a difference is it? What do you think it should be and what it isn't?
Maybe Mandy needs to come forward to this.
Okay, the current salary for the sheriff for twenty-two is one, one hundred and nine thousand and ninety-six dollars. So the amount of the increase that you did for the clerk of courts went from eighty-two thousand four oh four to eighty-four thousand, which I just had this here. Fifteen hundred and ninety-six dollar increase. So if you were to provide that same fifteen hundred and ninety-six dollars to the sheriff's salary, it'd make it a hundred and ten thousand six hundred and ninety-two in the first term for two thousand twenty-three. One hundred and ten thousand six hundred and ninety-two. And then should I carry across what we had done for percentage increase, just for those of you that wanted to? For two thousand twenty-four, both of those salaries were increased by one percent. For two thousand twenty-five, it was one and a half percent and for two thousand twenty-six, two percent. So give me a minute here to just do my calculation. The second year would be a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine. Two thousand and twenty-five would be a hundred and thirteen thousand four seventy-six. And then the fourth year, a hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty-five. So we'll check that on ours. That is correct. So a hundred and ten thousand six ninety-two twenty-two forty-four, a hundred and eleven thousand seven ninety-nine thousand twenty-five, a hundred and thirteen thousand four seventy-six thousand twenty-six, a hundred and fifteen thousand seven forty-five.
Anyway, go ahead.
So we need a second amended motion.
I pushed the button.
I can tell.
Supervisor Buzz Quest. I'll second that.
Seconded by Supervisor Buzz Quest.
Further discussion on the amended motion.
Discussion on the amended motion. Ms. Dogg.
I got feeling on this, I don't think we should be changing any compensation in the sheriff's department at this point, so investigations are complete and through. We don't know what's been going on. We should have some answers before we change any compensation.
Supervisor Murphy.
Yes, I sat in on most or all of the meetings that been part of the H R department that discussed this. And one thing that I heard today that bothers me is that it seemed to be among some a feeling that it was zeroed in on a particular person rather than the office. We tried very hard to, at the office, we tried very hard to look at comparable. As far as Supervisor Craig saying some haven't come through, that's true. Some of the counties around us haven't come through yet. But how long can we wait for some of the, excuse me, some of the other counties to come forth with their particular amount that they're paying their elected supervisor, elected people. As far as rank order, we started this process among the counties. We had three counties that were higher ranked among the approximately dozen we were looking at, that's comparables. Those were Aldagami, Winnebago, and Wood. And it was felt that for competitiveness, it's felt that for the concern about the taxpayers' money that they're expending for government's costs. That what we brought forward was a legitimate amount. And that's the numbers that you see in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Supervisor Federitz.
Yeah, this was a very difficult decision made originally by the H R committee and passed on to the finance committee. We tried to look at the job, not the individual. In my mind, we, I never talked about anything going on in the sheriff's department because I believe we have an excellent sheriff's department and as far as money goes, you know, we could pay them five thousand more, ten thousand or whatever. Then that's not the issue. We're trying to look at the job compared to the other ones that are out there and the timing is probably not perfect, but we have to do it today. We can't wait till next month. The real issue was is if you looked at Wood, Winnebago, and Aldagami County, we were paying our sheriffs the same as Aldagami County. And in my mind, I believe Aldagami County has substantial more population than Willpecker County. So I was looking at this job. And when we get down to the other individual, clerk, that was individual there that if you look at the job, we were paying substantially more. So we raise that more, not, it's gonna be a new person. So but you have to look at the job, not the person. And you go back to the sheriff's department and talk about inequities, I believe, and don't quote my memory exactly, but Chana County to the northwest, which is less than population, they're paying their sheriff only about eighty-four thousand one hundred dollars. So again, very difficult job. Trying to look at the job, not the individual. Again, I believe we have an excellent sheriff's department.
Thank you, Mr. Federitz. Mr. Kerry Murphy.
I forgot that I requested this speech. Somebody that I, that was Mr. Zach, coming at the boss of investigations going on. I'm a little bit cryptic to it. But you gotta remember that it's an investigation. You can't find anybody guilty. So we have to that investigation is over. So whatever's being done here has nothing to do with the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Supervisor Boyer.
Yes, when I asked for the comparison, I actually was thinking more percentage. Is there a different percentage in those two employees?
An increase of, excuse me, an increase of what it was prior to. What was the one point nine percent? To go from eighty-two thousand four dollars to eighty-four thousand four, the clerk of circuit courts was one point nine percent. If you're looking at the increase that for the sheriff's salary, which is currently one oh nine, oh ninety-six to a hundred and ten thousand six ninety-two would be one point four six percent, roughly one point five percent increase.
Ms. Nygaard.
Thank you. I guess I don't mind if Willpecker County is comparable to Aldagami in the pay scale on this. I have not been on the board terribly long and Sheriff Wills is the second sheriff already. So it's one of these jobs where sometimes we do see a little more turnover. And if we're competitive in our wage, that's gonna be an incentive, hopefully, to to have somebody qualified want to take the job. So these jobs aren't all fun. Managing a lot of people like the big department of the sheriff's department. And if we stay competitive with our surrounding counties on our fee scale, hopefully that will attract capable and qualified people to be interested in the job as people decide to retire and step down.
Thank you, Ms. Nygaard.
Mr. Will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have known the sheriffs in Willpecker County since Sheriff Moore. And I have to say that Sheriff Wills, and no relation obviously because of the name of Will, but the fact is, is that Sheriff Wills, for the time I've been on law enforcement committees, has shown an extremely high level of professionalism. He's done more, I think, since he's been sheriff than many years prior to that. We have an excellent sheriff's department that's meeting the needs of our county. And they are, as Mr. Chairman, you pointed out, he has gone out to the community. And we are giving information to the community regarding important things such as looking at the diving situation. We have a team for that. We have obviously the K nine, you mentioned today, and wonderful public support we've had for that. And I believe most of that is due to the current person who is our sheriff. We can't decide what we pay someone based on who's in that position. I agree with Mr. Federitz and some of the others here that you have to base it on the position and the position alone regarding either of these two positions. And I do believe we need to, as Ms. Nygaard says, we have to be very competitive if we're going to keep the people that we need here and and support them. And as much as we all talk about all the benefits of serving the people, this is America and we do base a lot on what we get paid. And it's a lot to have to say to someone, well, you're you're not going to get paid as well as so and so. I think we gotta be very competitive. It's very hard to get sheriff officers to begin with. And a lot of the reason I think people come to any department that we have has to do with who the department heads are. And I think Sheriff Wills has really shown his capability of this. He's really shown to the public that he's out there for them, working for them, looking out for their safety concerns. And I really think that although there's very good argument as to what you're paying him on that, it just seems odd that we just don't have the same type of percentage. Because we're gonna come to the other elected officials, I'm assuming, soon. And we'll have to decide on them based on this comparables. And I, I just think it's just so much easier just to, to a certain percentage across the board for elected officials to leave it at that. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Mr. Paul.
Manny, I have a question. So if we raise it to the new numbers, what percentage is that?
So if you do it by a percentage, the percentage that the move was from the eighty-two four oh four to eighty-four thousand for the clerk of courts was one point nine percent. If you apply that same percentage to the sheriff, the salary for two thousand and twenty-three would be a hundred and eleven thousand one sixty-nine. Then apply the one percent for two thousand and twenty-four would be a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars. The one and a half percent for two thousand and twenty-four would be a hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. And applying two percent for two thousand and twenty-six would be a hundred and sixteen thousand two forty-four. So is that the same as for the clerk of courts? Right. The second year was a one percent and the third year one point five and the fourth year two percent. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kerry Murphy.
A simple question. Why is the clerk of court and the sheriff moved together? Why are they separate entities?
So they alternate terms. So these two happen to be up at election at the same time. And then alternating your other three elected officials are kind of two years. Now they're set two years out ahead and then it's kind of, they're not all on the same schedule, which would make it a little bit easier to do, but they're alternating.
Anybody else? I. Supervisor Newman.
Thank you, Chairman Kevin. I also looked at those comparables when they were presented to the H R committee. And we typically do that, we focus very narrow on the comparatives. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be to our advantage to expand that rather than just looking at what does the sheriff make in Aldagami County? And look at a much wider view. What are professionals paid? What do city administrators get? I don't know what city administrators in Willpecker County are paid. What are school district superintendents paid? I'm not sure. What are other employees in county government paid? You know, at different levels. And I'm thinking we should look at the sheriffs and the clerk of courts and all these others in terms of a wider area of professionals. I mean, these people have been to school, they've been trained in law enforcement, they're state certified. It's not something anybody can achieve. Takes a lot of study. It takes a lot of practice, a lot of everything. And those of you that are retired law enforcement officers know what the standards are for the state of Wisconsin. So I, I'm just thinking that next time we do this, maybe we should look at what are school district administrators pay? What are city administrators pay? That kind of thing. What are other employees in Willpecker County pay? And compare them with sheriff's department, whatever you want to have. And maybe that would answer a lot of our questions as we have. Just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else? I just have to say during my time here that unfortunately that going over the elected official salaries here is always been really tough. Because I think that they have really never been totally happy as elected officials, what they get compared to other staff members. That's just, that's what I. They didn't get mad and want to fight about it, but they were a, a bit upset. So. That being said, I just have to think that, again, this is not who's in office because I could be changing too in a year or two. We, we just never know about elected officials. And another thing as too, you have to realize, when they applied for the job, when they asked to run for their job, they knew what the job was going to get paid. They did. They knew the salary and it seemed that didn't deter them at all. Even when we were underpaying some, some members of elected officials. And maybe we still are. We don't know that. We haven't come to that all totally yet. So that's a tough one. It's really a tough one. They try not to get personalities, try not to get person in it at all. It's a job that is. On the other hand, I'm torn between the danger of the job, the danger of that profession, the disrespect that profession has gotten in the last number of years. The crap they have to pay. That's not only the sheriff, but it's people all in the room every day and night. It's, it is very, very upsetting at the meeting. And so it's personally I'm torn between all of us, as many of you are, Sheriff. So that's all I have to say. Supervisor Boyer?
Could you repeat the motion?
So the amendment is to. And the sheriff's salary from the recommendation that came from the committee, Christie is going to screen.
And the numbers that Manny play along with me is the first year would be a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. But that's with the, that's with the flat dollar amount increase and then Joyce had talked about percentage. So that would be my question. Are we talking, the motion is for the flat? The motion was, and the second is for the flat dollar amount. One ten, six ninety-two, one hundred and eleven, seven ninety-nine, one hundred and thirteen, four seventy-six, one hundred and fifteen, seven forty-five. That was the motion in the second. Ready to vote? No, we have a motion in a second on, on the amendment. If you repeat the numbers, who can give Christie more time? So a hundred and ten, six ninety-two, a hundred and eleven, seven ninety-nine, a hundred and thirteen, four seventy-six, and a hundred and fifteen, seven forty-five.
So was that? Let me just add that it was.
Fifteen hundred and ninety-six dollars.
The amendment was. Presented to adjust the.
Everybody understand what we're doing? That's all.
Last chance to vote. That carries fifteen to eleven. So now we can go back to the, the entire resolution as amended.
Okay, we need a motion for a amended resolution.
She's got a clear, yeah.
Okay, we're voting on the amended resolution. Okay.
Do you need to read those figures again? So the clerk of court is going to be saying the same as the original package resolution? And then the sheriff's salary will incorporate the changes we just made. For year twenty twenty-three to be a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. Twenty twenty-four be one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Twenty twenty-five, one hundred and thirteen, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And for twenty twenty-six, one hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. I'm going to get only the motion in a second on that as well.
Okay, now we need a motion on the amended resolution.
It's the amendment. Now we do the resolution as amended.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you want to hold the motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Supervisor Squares.
Move to approve the motion, or the resolution as amended.
You, Squares, made a motion to approve the resolution as amended. Supervisor Gray, Craig seconded that motion. Yes, seconded by Supervisor Gray. Discussion?
Last chance to vote. That carries nineteen to seven.
Thank you. Now we go down to resolution number sixty, twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. A mended twenty twenty-one budget transportation services fund.
Now therefore be resolved that the twenty twenty-one budget for the local road improvement program be reduced to three hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And now therefore be further resolved that five hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollar county sales and use tax for the general fund shall be transferred to the transportation services fund for the purpose of paying highway construction projects. And now therefore be further resolved that two hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollar funds are committed to future highway construction projects.
Okay, we need a motion. Supervisor Nigard.
Move to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Nigard for approval. In a second, we need Supervisor McClellan.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McClellan. Questions? Discussion? Questions? Okay, now my floor.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-six to zero.
Next is all the resolution number sixty-one, twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. SBE easement relief.
Now therefore, let it be resolved by the board supervisors of the Opekka, of the County of Opekka that exclusion area be listed in document number eight, zero, two, four, five, one. Be released from the terms of the Sandy Valley Farms Conservation Easement as outlined in section H three of the easement.
Okay, we have a motion. Supervisor Nigard, move to approve. Motion by Supervisor Nigard for approving. Supervisor Moore.
Mark seconds.
And Supervisor Moore, we detect. Questions? Discussion? Supervisor Gray.
Could we please have Brian explain this to us?
Yeah, he's on his way up.
Okay, so for those of you that have been around a, a ten or twelve years, you recall that we had a conservation easement program that was put into chapter forty-seven here after the comprehensive planning efforts in two thousand and six to two thousand and nine, which put us in a position to participate in a, a program that the Department of Agriculture had in twenty-ten that purchased agricultural conservation easements. And we had six farms in this county that partook in that, consisting of about thirty-three hundred acres. Sandy Valley Farms was one of those farms that has the conservation easement, which basically restricts development from their farmland in perpetuity. And their farm is being sold, closing date is next month. The, the entire farm is being sold to a farm from Manitowoc County as they kind of transition out of farming. The Bauer family, anyway. So this was just a cleanup. Christie, do you have that photo?
I do have.
Okay. There, there's basically a, a one acre lot that had a, a old farmhouse on it, on Vessel Road. And there was some surrounding farm buildings that belonged to Sandy Valley that they have no use for, the buyer does not want. And really, they kind of belong, as you look at a map, with that, with the house that was allotted off many years ago. So this just releases about an acre and a half of those existing buildings on. They're actually being used by the owner of the one acre parcel that already exists. So they're going to sell that to that landowner, combine that as a single parcel. So if we release this, then it goes to zoning and it goes through the process.
Any other questions? My floor.
Last chance to vote. That carries twenty-six to zero.
Okay, we are back in session. Move down to ordinance six. A is twenty twenty-two dash seven five nine. Amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z dash zero zero one dash two zero two two, pound of larynx. Charles W. and Karen J. Dieter for zoning map amendment from AR District to AWT District on approximately one acre, point nine acres. And thank you, Ryan.
Okay, so that portion right there, what they're looking at doing is they're changing the zoning district from this to the AR District to the AWT District. The reasoning behind this is they're looking at combining that parcel, that little triangle there with the parcel to the north. And in order to be able to do that, they need the same zoning district.
That's it for that. Okay, we have a motion for approval. Supervisor Harding.
Make a motion to approve.
Supervisor Harding made a motion to approve Supervisor Johnson. Seconded by Supervisor Johnson. Question or discussion? That's all.
Last chance to vote. Back here is twenty-six to zero.
Okay, AC. Twenty twenty-two dash seven six oh, amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z dash zero zero two dash two zero twenty-two, pound of larynx. Charles W. and Karen J. Dieter for zoning map amendment from AWT District to AR District on approximately nine or eight point eight acres.
So this is the second portion of the comprehensive plan of amendments that we did just prior to this county board meeting. We had changed that portion right there from the commercial planning district to the agricultural district to allow for them to rezone from the AWT to the retention district. The intention here is that it's going to be combined with the parcels to the south. And again, in order for them to be able to do that, they need the same zoning district.
Supervisor question? Oh, make a motion to approve. Make a motion by Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Iger.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Iger. Question or discussion?
Last chance to vote. Back here is twenty-six to zero.
AC is AR, excuse me. AC is twenty twenty-two dash seven six one. Amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z dash zero zero three dash twenty twenty-two, pound of bear, correct name, insurance, for a zoning map amendment from AE District to CB District on approximately forty-five point six one acres.
So this district, we did.
There we go.
Yeah, so the Schertz family is looking at. This is a divided property. They're looking at having several different owners of this. And so what they're looking at doing is subdividing it. But they can't do it because they don't have the necessary development rights. And so what they're going to be doing is rezoning into the CB District, which is our conservancy district. It's exciting for us as an office because this is the first parcel in the county that's actually being rezoned to a conservancy. The point of the conservancy district is really meant to be basically a poor man's land trust. The idea is that you're saying that there's no development rights on this parcel. You cannot develop it in any way. And so, but you still have the ability to be able to put or subdivide it. And so it is essentially a hunted parcel, which is what the intention of this, a lot of it is what we're.
Supervisor Ron.
I made a motion to approve.
Motion by Supervisor Ron, Ron, for approval. Mr. McLean.
I would second that.
Seconded by Mr. McLean. Question or discussion?
Last chance to vote. Back here is twenty-six to zero.
Okay, now the I O D is twenty twenty-two dash seven six two. Amendment to chapter thirty-four, petition number Z dash zero zero four dash twenty twenty-two, town of Muckaw. Lynn Old Grayson for a zoning map amendment from AWT District to RL dash L District on approximately two acres.
So this is the secondary piece of the project where we have, we are, again, previously in the board meeting, we approved the comprehensive plan of them to allow for the rezone that you see in this area marked in green. So this is a second piece where we're actually doing the zone map amendment. Again, the zone map amendment on this one is that we're going from the AWT or A Woodland Transition Districts to the rural industrial intensive district. Again, the point of this is that in the end, they want to combine these two parcels together. It's one larger parcel.
Dog.
Need to approve this ordinance?
Motion by Supervisor Dog for approval of that ordinance. Johnson? Seconded, seconded by Supervisor Johnson. Discussion?
Last chance to vote. Back here is twenty-six to zero.
And we have I O D. Then chapter seven, point oh four, speed restriction, restriction of county highway J.
The speed limit on County Trunk Highway J of forty-five miles per hour will begin at the village of Iowa's northern limits and continue onto County Trunk Highway J approximately one point one miles.
Supervisor Sperings. I move to approve. Motion by Supervisor Sperings for approval. Supervisor McLean.
I will second the motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McLean. Questions? Discussion? That's all.
Last chance to vote. Back here is twenty-six to zero.
Okay, that puts our ordinance into place. Now we have reports. Information Technology Report for Mr. Brian Wildon in Jeff Simons. Brian.
From Information Technology, kind of get a lot of questions sometimes who we are or what we do. So in the department report today, I thought we just kind of touched base on those two things. And then again, I have Jeff Simons here to kind of demonstrate the Opeka County website for you and then show you a couple of programs that needs maintenance for Opeka County. So as far as the, who we are. My name is Brian Wildon. I'm the IT Director. I've worked for Opeka County since nineteen ninety-nine. It's been a long time. I started out as an independent contractor for the Department of Health and Human Services. And I was hired on to in two thousand and one as an IT employee. I held numerous positions over the years. And then in two thousand sixteen, I became the IT Director. Jeff Simons, our IT Analyst. Hired in two thousand eighteen as an IT Administrator. His knowledge of programming allowed him to support our IT analyst very well. And then when she retired in two thousand twenty-one, we promoted Jeff to IT Analyst. He's just done a fantastic job of supporting the programs for Opeka County. Cindy Anderson, this one's kind of tough for me. She started in nineteen seventy-seven. And she worked in the treasurer's office pretty much until nineteen ninety-nine, around the time that I started. And she's going to be retiring in July of this year after forty-five years working for Opeka County. She's been a tremendous asset to our department and actually makes a kind of emotional pocket about it because she's been a part of my whole career since we've been here. So like I said, a tremendous asset. Actually, she's going to be great in this. So if you know her, if you've worked with her, you know, definitely say goodbye to her before she leaves. I know she'd love to hear it. Christian Snowbridge, he's our IT Administrator. He was hired last year, although he's our newest employee. He shows great promise. He does a lot of great work for us. We're definitely looking forward to his growth for Opeka County. We do have a vacant position as well that we're recruiting for right now. So if you know anybody that works in IT, please let them know. And then one thing I want to mention about my staff. I'm just so proud of the work that they do every day. You know, we work nights, we work weekends, we work holidays or on call. It's amazing that the work we do, I don't know if it's always appreciated by, you know, the departments that we support because if you really want to call in us, there's a problem with something. But I'm just proud of the work that they do, the work that they did dispatch. You know, to get that system up and running is just phenomenal. So, you know, I'm very proud of the work that the department does. Can I have you down? That's all right. You know, if you give me the back, that'd be great. But I'm going to keep going. The Information Technology Department is responsible for the hardware, software, networking, computers for Opeka County. And we perform a number of duties. A number of duties to ensure that employees have access to Opeka County technology systems. These duties include IT technical support, IT administration, IT programming, planning and maintaining the network architecture, and planning and maintaining the county website. I'll provide technical support to the employees of Opeka County. The support includes installing new or updated software, installing new or upgraded hardware, repairing hardware, troubleshooting a variety of IT-related problems, training employees on the use of hardware and software. We provide iPad support to the county board supervisors and we maintain a help desk to assist employees with computer-related issues. If my slideshow was going to the help desk phone number and email address would be up there. But if you ever wonder what that is, we can provide that for you. As far as administration goes, we are responsible for planning, installing, setting up Opeka County technology systems and ensure that the systems are operating properly and that employees have the ability to communicate and share data in the local and wide area networks that we have. Some of the big projects that we've administered for the last couple of years included the telework pandemic of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And as we transitioned to a process of some departments going to telework that happened in twenty twenty-one until current. We did a phone system upgrade in twenty twenty. We did server upgrades at both the courthouse and the backup sites. We did switch upgrades to the sheriff's office and the courthouse. We did Wi-Fi upgrade in the sheriff's office. We set up new hardware and set up equipment for the dispatch center. That's where I talked about Jeff and Christian really knocking it out of park, getting that stuff ready, getting in the room before they were occupying it, getting everything set up, cables tied up so that the room looked nice that we weren't in the way of the people that wasn't working there. A new AS four hundred system in twenty twenty. We're still working with Ron and made some of the new HVAC system. We worked with Mike from Zanty. He had a new records management system for the register of deeds. And then just the numerous laptops, desktops, and phones that we have set up here. And as far as programming goes, Jeff is our IT Analyst. He was responsible for creating new programs for Opeka County as well as support the current programs that we use. Departments bring their program requests to our department. Jeff will be with them over the parameters of that. If a new program is there or supports of a current program, Jeff is the one that will be creating that. Jeff is also responsible for working with third-party vendors on programs that Opeka County has purchased. This includes installing new software, installing updates to the existing software, rebooting equipment, and troubleshooting any issues with the assistance of the vendors. Some examples of in-house programs that Jeff supports. Sheriff's sale and gear log program. The sanitary program from the zoning department. The WIC application in COVID-19 vaccination registrations for the Department of Health and Human Services and the land record search for the treasurer's department. The sanitary program from the zoning department, the WIC application, COVID-nineteen vaccination registrations for the Department of Health and Human Services and the land record search for the Treasurer's Department. Some examples of vendor-provided programs that we support, the financial software Lobos, the HR payroll software Time Clock Plus, the DHH record software TCM and the law enforcement records programs. Uh, network architecture, the IT Department is responsible for planning, designing, implementing and maintaining the Waback County technology network. The technology network is made up of various systems that allow computers to communicate with each other internally as well as systems that devices externally. Now, I did have, I don't know, can you, can you advance mine? Get a triple A? I wanted to show you a couple of diagrams to kind of represent. How our systems work here. The light works better there. So let's get to the network diagram. So on this diagram, the world over here represents our internet. And then the internet comes through a router provided to us from our internet service provider, the firewall that you see there, the long piece. Um, that allows us to determine which systems connect to us and which data comes to and leads Waback County's network. The firewall that connects to a county switch, which also connects to the server, the network storage and then all the peripheral devices that we have on our network. For our telework diagram, it's kind of half of what you would have on the inside. The telework user at their remote location connects to us through their internet secure connection. They come in through our router, into our firewall and then we're able to access all of the systems that they were sitting here. When they're all down, they disconnect their secure connection and that they are no longer connected to our network. So Waback County website, the IT Department creates and maintains the county website. The IT Analyst Jeff designs the layout of the site, writes the application code and tests the site for usability, security and ADA compliance. Each department is responsible for their website content as well as any social media content that they post. The IT Department also creates and maintains Waback County Intranet Site, website where that's where our employee-specific content is, there's a secure section where we can log in and see what's up. So with that, um, and next is the slide, Waback County Website Demonstration. I asked Jeff to be here to kind of, kind of go through some of the things that we're going to go through. So up at the top here, you see the department's residence, the menu bar up there, there's a section over there that says translate this and search. Lower right-hand corner down here, we have the COVID information provided by Public Health. So any current COVID-nineteen information is here on this page. Now, once back on the main site, you see this giant ribbon in the center. Meetings and agendas and minutes. For those of you that get your packets and stuff for the email, wherever your email fails, this is where you would go to get your agenda and your minutes. If you click on, just click on any one of those, that might have a packet. So about a little bit, you can see that there's packet information and agendas. And then we got municipalities. Where just has all the towns of and cities over there. Then online services. These are the services that we can provide online. Jeff is actually going to show you the timber cutting notice and then land records search in a couple of minutes. County Board Committee on YouTube, that's where you go to see the committee minute, the meetings that we broadcast live stream on YouTube, they're archived there for future use. And election information, something Christie needs to get out there will be right there. And in the interest of time, we're not going to go through all this stuff at the top, but if you click on departments up in the upper left-hand corner and pick like human resources. You feel to see the services that they provide, information on the left here. You put that health and services. Oh, they say health and human services, I meant human resources, sorry. Yeah, so.
The same chart?
Yeah, human resources, there you go. So that information over here, you've got employment opportunities, policies and procedures, compensation, classification, et cetera. And then the red, you don't have to click on the next tabs, but the residents tab has information for any residents, for Waback County, they might be businesses. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, any information that businesses might be looking for, visitors, why don't you click the I want to ones? So this kind of answers your question, I want to find my full employees, I want to find a job. So there's a lot of categories there for somebody who doesn't maybe know what they want, has an idea of what they want to look for. Then judging, click on quick links there, just some more stuff, the Intranet stuff is lined up on the left there, the employee access, the employee Intranet. And then some Chamber of Commerce information, travel, we have our department. So with that website, I think I'll just let Jeff kind of give you a brief demonstration of two programs that are online that he works on. So first of all, it is a click to the online services, or it is also click for the treasurer page, if either you may have used the XRG. Very, very popular public-facing application. My name in there, put an address in there. Search. So this one will pull up, onto information about your property. Assessment information, and what people really uses for a tax time is to print out their tax bills, so. Their reverse town, that actually has your tax payments, I think some of the most highly used public-facing apps that we have. Another one is. See, uh, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is also. Linked from. Kind of treasurer, I just wanted to show you that, a lot of people used to grab anything. Access information search here is the same program. One of the online programs. Timber cutting notice, this is crazy, if these come through, but they say it's an online form that people or companies that are cutting on people's land are allowed. They'll get, they'll get an email of a PDF of all the information that the actual form goes to the county clerk. So it actually generates their permit. Public-facing application, we have a lot of other applications that we made to make departmental. Or easier, there's a deer law that we had on the Intranet for the Sheriff's Department and the Highway Department to fill out. Where there's, uh, downed gears to be removed. Ton, ton of applications that aren't public-facing, but these are two big ones that anybody could access. So finishing up, obviously we had a lot of retirements from county board, I did work with a lot of you and I, I kind of, too sad about that, but we have worked a lot with Pat Craig and, uh. And he started answering my questions. And I appreciate the fact that she would take notes, she wouldn't necessarily take what I said as gospel, she'd go back, she'd look it up, she'd ask me more questions. So it, it's good to have engaged county board supervisors and like I said, I can't speak to, I know a lot of you because I don't work directly with a lot of you, but the ones I finance and IT, I do. So Pat, you know, not that I'm not going to miss the others, but Pat, we are going to miss you on IT committee, so definitely wish you well. Other than that, if anybody asks me questions, that's all I've got.
Any questions? Yes, Pat, yes, great. My question is, because I'm leaving, could you give us sort of, do you want us to turn in our iPads for the last committee meeting that we have? And then what we're doing, in other words, do I go through and delete all the emails?
You don't, you don't have to.
Photos that I've taken, or you just kind of wipe it clean?
Well, Joyce gave us hers today, so I've got hers already.
Okay.
Your last committee meeting, I obviously want you to be able to have access to the email and everything that you need for your next committee and I'd use it for that committee if you do. So once you're done with that committee, if you just drop it off with Christie at the fronts or department. If your, if your last committee is an IT committee, you can drop it off with me. I guess if you drop it off with the department head of that committee, just ask that they drop it off with us. But yeah, they're, you can return it. And then as far as email goes, you don't have to worry about deleting it, you know, once we get the iPad back, we're going to move the account so it won't be on there anymore. And then we'll set up it for the next supervisor. Anybody else?
Uh, well, I want to get something on a committee meeting and like zoning, sometimes my PDF will come through. It's too big, is it because I don't have enough at my house or is it?
No, there's usually a part up at the top that you can click on that says download whole message. One thing that Apple does is it kind of pays attention to your connections that are wireless as if you were paying for it, not a direct connection to like a router. So they don't always give you the whole message because they're figuring you might be on a connection where you're paying for data. So if they give you the gist of it, if you want the rest, there's a button up at the top that says download whole. I would have twenty-two years ahead, yeah, I'm showing that button the most times, so.
Thank you.
Keep an eye up in the upper, up at the top there because there should be a button that pops up.
Thank you.
In fact, we just doubled that up three times this morning, so.
Anybody else? Yes, thanks for the great presentation. Thank you for you and your department, what you all do for it. Good day, John, thank you.
The GIS Land Re, information for Gage and McCleary. Now you go.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, come on, everyone.
Morning.
Um, my part of it's me a little short, I was, I talked to you last year, so I'm going to give some time to Jason and John. But a couple of things I want to do, I do want to reach out and thank those retiring supervisors. Appreciate your time and efforts for our county, especially when I reached out to Pat Craig again. Uh, she sits on our finance committee, which I report to and always has good questions and insight in that area. And, uh, and Mike coming on board as a town treasurer was very helpful to me and featuring back and forth, I appreciate that, Pat, very much. I also have to recognize Inram Chair, Dennis Kussman. We've had some interesting times, there's no doubt the Inram foreclosure part of my position is certainly the most difficult, delicate part of my job. We've had some interesting trips around the county and we've looked at properties and things I appreciate. His insight will be missed with his background and the real third end of it, it's been very helpful, so I'll miss that and appreciate your efforts with that. Um, this morning I put a little piece of paper on each desk and there's something in the back, it's called the Help for Homeowners. Talk about Inram foreclosures right now, uh, we're working on those delinquencies for twenty eighteen taxes. We're making good progress, so we're getting people into payment plans, it means a life. Uh, the Wisconsin Help for Homeowners is, and I'm just giving this to you, if you know anyone in your, uh, districts that needs help in any capacity, may not be delinquent taxes, maybe they're running behind on utilities, it might be their mortgage. But traditionally and coming from a banking background, if they're delinquent under taxes, a pretty good chance they're probably laying on their mortgages or utilities. So, um, there is about ninety-two million dollars in the state of Wisconsin that's COVID-relief related funds. That are targeted for this homeowner, Help for Homeowners. It's administered through the Department of Administration on the state. They report, works directly with cap services. But anytime we have someone within my office who are working with them, delinquencies that are COVID-related, so it's not going to help those people with twenty eighteen, it's not going to bring them back that far. If it's COVID-related, um, there's the application process, it is obviously income-driven, but it's not traditionally, it's not as restrictive as other funds. So I encourage, if you have anybody in your district, you know someone, and it doesn't have to be necessarily taxes, but it certainly is one that's most related to me. Um, is maybe an opportunity for them to get some funds that will help them out and get them off my list, which obviously is my number one goal. But also may help them in other areas, create some funds. So this is a new program, once the funds are gone, they're gone, they're hoping three years, but, uh, state of Wisconsin, ninety-two million dollars, I don't know if that will go three years, but it's kind of, it's there. So I have a highlight for you how they can reach out, whether email or website or eight hundred number, but I encourage them to reach out. I can assure you, before we take anybody's property, if they've had contact with us, we've given them multiple resources that they can reach out for support and assistance. And this is the newest one and, um, I think it's a bit great timing. Um, it's basically if you're affected by COVID, which I think there's a room, person's room has it, it's all the way shape or form. So, uh, and we're going to encourage them to reach out and maybe they can get some help and get them off our list. Again, that's our, my number one goal, uh, is not to take their properties, uh, but to get the taxes current, so something to look at. One last piece, when I talk about taxes, uh, again, very encouraging in our county. Uh, we've already collected almost eighty percent of the real estate taxes for this year. In Waback County, that number is about a little over eighty million dollars is paid in real estate taxes. Um, as of that first installment, roughly sixty million of it was collected, so almost eighty percent has been already paid, which is pretty traditional. Last year, that number was about seventy-nine percent, about two years ago, it was seventy-seven percent. So it's encouraging numbers to see. Um, obviously, and obviously the test results have gotten much more prevalent, anytime there's mortgage-related, which helps. Um, but it's a good number. Of that sixty million, our office, we collect for fourteen municipalities and I have to compliment Bob FreehumanTreasure Deputy and Beth, we processed about thirty-one and a half million in our office alone. So they do an incredible job, they're my appoint people, they handle a lot of it, do an outstanding job. And then we collect the rest here for the second installment, so, uh, it's going in the right direction. So I don't have any else on the treasurer's piece. Um, I'm fortunate to have an outstanding group that handles our GIS and I'm going to introduce Jason McKeefrey, who is our GS Coordinator and our Land Information Officer. It's not an area of expertise for me whatsoever, so it's very important and nice to have somebody that knows their stuff, so I'm going to let him take it from here. And if there's any questions, I know they'll be able to take care of that, so Jason McKeefrey.
Thank you, Mark. To get started today, I want to say thanks to Supervisors Ellis and Murphy, they've been on the Land Information Council for quite a few years. I hope it's been interesting for you, if not, we always have treats. And then I also want to make sure that I say thanks to Brent and Jeff and the IT Department in general, because they're absolutely critical to operating our geographic information system and all the other systems. Um, I'll share a quick story. It was maybe a week after I took this position, Thanksgiving, I'm at home just sitting down to eat. And my phone rings and I see Waback County on my phone and I'm like, that is not a good thing. And so I answered the call and here's Jeff, Jeff saying, hey, we can't get the web server restarted. Brent wanted me to call you, he thinks you should be here and we can all try and deal with it. So I come in and, uh, they let me into this sort of secret server rules. And there's these racks of servers, you know, they're all open and taller than me. And when the door opens, I was thinking, where is the airplane? And I'm looking for smoke, it was just really loud. And, uh, we go over to the server that's not functioning and all the fans are on and I'm like, looking at the thing, thinking it's going to take off. Well, Jeff goes into his office, starts Googling, comes back a few minutes later and he's like, we can try this. And he takes the cover off, changes this jumper on the thing and it came back to life, so. back to life. So, um, with the IT, it's like a lot of times you don't notice what they do until something already goes wrong, but, um, just really thankful for their support. Um, and then after that, we decided, uh, we're not gonna have these physical servers sitting here anymore. Instead, they put together, I think it's three virtual servers that they run for us. Um, one of them is kind of dedicated to the sheriff's department that serves out our G I S services that they consume in their, their CAD dispatch software. One of them runs our G I S enterprise database and then the other one runs a bunch of other G I S services that get served out for our website. We'll show you that in a little bit. So, the reason we're located in the treasures department is because traditionally and even now, our main purpose is to keep track of who owns what and where. And so that's because, uh, we need to be able to assess the land and then tax it. It's not fun, but that is how the government gets funded. Uh, so it has some kind of fundamental importance there. Um, I can't really talk about the land information office without telling you something about, uh, G I S. So, so this is a tax parcel map that was used, uh, hand drawn prior to when we had G I S. How it is not working yet. Can you advance the slide yourself?
Not sure. Is it not?
And I kinda need to be able to show you that. There, yeah. Okay. So yeah, I have to tell you something about G I S or geographic information systems. So essentially we have all this data and it can be in databases, it can be in files, it can be in images, but the key thing is that there's something about this data that tells where it is. So the G I S gives us all these powerful mapping analysis and query tools that, but it, and it also lets us sort of distribute this information. We can ta- take information from various places, bring it all together. And it also has powerful tools to automate a lot of work. So like when we're all gone tonight, the, the G I S will be doing hours of work automatically to produce some of what we'll show you here today. And what I like to kind of say is that the take home point is the, really it's about bringing efficiency and utility and ultimately value to all of this data that we have. Um, and even as far as like the, the technology that IT maintains, we might kind of ask them to do stuff and, uh, we'll use their technology, but in that way, we're bringing value to all of this stuff that we've already invested in. One thing that's not on here is, is people. So I wanna, uh, tell you a little bit about the people in our office. So John and I are mainly the ones that have our hands in the G I S from a data basis, um, with maintaining address information, um, doing the parcel mapping. Um, we review surveys, we maintain the zoning data. Um, but then we also have Donna Andrasco, she's our property lister. She actually works in a separate database that is integrated into the G I S and she uses that to keep track of who owns the parcels. She's also the first person to understand how any given parcel changes and then, and she uses the register deeds information to do that. So she'll put together, um, documents that we'll use then to, to do the parcel mapping. And she also does some of the parcel mapping within G I S as well. So she's really crucial to the land information office. And then last but not least, I wanna mention, uh, Joe Glavelski, he's the county surveyor. He's in our office. Um, and it, one of his main responsibilities is to maintain what's called the public land survey system. So here we're looking at, um, one of the first maps that shows how this public land survey system looks in County. Uh, our area of Willpac County was originally surveyed and this public land survey system was put in place during the eighteen fifties. So this is a paper map that sits in our office. Um, and I want you to kind of see how this is compared to how things are now in terms of how we keep track of land records. Um, I also brought some props. So when the, when those surveyors came through, um, at each of the section corners, they drove in cedar stakes in the ground. Um, so previous county surveyors went and replaced, um, these cedar stakes. And today we would use something like, like this. That would be typical for a, a section corner. Um, you know, cast iron. This is actually Joe's custom design. Um, I don't know if you find this in any place other than Willpac County, but, um, it's got a nice handle for carrying. I believe that it's designed with these indentations here so that if it's in the middle of a road and they're rebuilding it or something, cloud or the bulldozer and just shear it right off. You don't lose the whole monument. Um, anyway, I thought those were pretty neat to see. So, um, for the last dozen years or so, uh, we've been going through to each section corner and collecting survey grade GPS coordinates on it, um, checking to make sure that the monuments are still there and, uh, retying it to other known features near that monument. So ultimately that makes surveying and keeping track of who owns what and where much more efficient. So I think now what we'll do is we'll kind of switch to showing some of the, the things that we have out there on the website. So I don't know if, do we have to get the browser going on one of those machines? Okay, so any one of those three, many of the items at the top, residents, businesses and visitors will take you to, um, our list of applications that we have out there. So maybe bring up the featured applications over here.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, you guys match that. So this is kind of like a gallery where you can find more focused applications that we have out there. Um, in the middle there is the land records viewer. This is kind of the all purpose mapping application that we have out there. Um, this is probably one of the more easy ways to see all the aerial photography that we have for the county.
This is really a strange post.
Um, so once you zoom in, you'll be able to see the, all the property boundaries. And you can click on each parcel and it, uh, will tell you the owner, the size of the parcel, the assessments. Uh, and it'll also let you link to the tax information. So we've kind of integrated these things. So that brings you to the tax information search page. Uh, you can also link to the, the zoning informations. You can even bring up a, a map that shows the zoning from there. Uh, but maybe let's go back to that land records viewer clip. Um, over on the right side, there's, uh, a way to access all the various historical area photos that we have as well. So we have photos from nineteen ninety-four up until twenty twenty. Oh yeah, I said the. Um, you never know how this might be useful. I just had, um, a town supervisor call me yesterday. No, it was a few days ago. And I guess they have a pipeline company coming through and we don't really have the, the pipe, pipeline map. Actually, they're gonna replace it, is what they're gonna do. But you can see on these air photos, you can see how the, uh, really more accurately get an idea of where this path, uh, across the ground for the, where the pipeline is. They cut through all the woodlots and maintain right of ways. Um, you never know what kind of use you might have for that. Maybe, John, let's take a look at, uh, the public, um, boundary viewer. It's got political boundaries, yeah. So this application shows the various administrative boundaries in Willpac County. So things like the supervisory districts, the ward boundaries, Aldermanic districts within the cities. Um, one of the other things that our office does is every ten years, we get involved with the districting process. Um, this year was, oh, not this year, last year was the first time that I had been involved with it. Um, that was a really neat process to go through because I, I felt like this was another way where, um, you kind of don't notice what we do, but it impacts pretty much every person in the county through that process. Uh, this, this last time that we did, the census data was delayed and we had to do it really fast and it would have been virtually impossible to do without G I S. Now I'll say that, uh, yeah, I don't think it had ever been done that quickly before. Um, we printed very few maps. It was all done almost entirely digitally, using G I S data and tools. And then, I had, I had a visual of this, but I guess I do wanna mention that with the address data that we maintain and read, almost all the other G I S data that we have, it all gets fed into the sheriff's CAD dispatching system. So like I said, we have a server that's pretty much dedicated to hosting these services that are always there. Um, I don't think a call comes into that center that doesn't reference the G I S data that we maintain daily.
That's the Stolman system that Brent was talking about earlier.
Um, and then, you know, I'll mention that our, our parcel data and the zoning information that we maintain is pretty critical to what the planning and zoning office does. Uh, they have, we have the public zoning viewer. We have a, at least a couple other applications that are more internal that they use. Um, we support their tablets that use GPS when they're on the field to do inspections. Um, it all takes just a few minutes to, to get into the G I S after they go out and collect the information. I don't know if I can get the slides back here. Oh, I'm actually a little something about our, we have an open data website. So, uh, pretty much anybody can go out there and download a significant amount of the G I S data that the county has. Um, you never know, engineering firms, uh, real estate professionals.
Millers, that's a common, people looking to put millers together.
Um, if you look closely at Google Maps, you'll see that our parcel boundary data, it's on Google Maps, a lot of building footprints. So all kinds of people find this and use it. Here's the Spillman CAD, uh, dispatch software that uses the mapping and location services. Here's the, the zoning viewer to display the different zones. You can, I think you can link it to the tax information from here too. And then this, this is, uh, we call her survey viewer. Um, this might be useful to many of you. Any parcel that is shown in orange, you can download, uh, apply to survey for it. Um, this is also how we distribute information about the section corners. So the surveyors use this a lot. They can access it on their fall as well. The, this is like a little dashboard that we had set up for, uh, the highway department. They've been using G I S a little bit more to keep track of, uh, weight limits, driveway access points, snowplow routes, culverts. So we're always looking for new ways to, to use the technology and bring value to all the data that we have. Um, one of these was presented by the pandemic. Um, I don't know if we were a month into the pandemic and you had put up a, a dashboard that showed the COVID statistics. And then really we're, we're here to do mapping and analysis for citizens. We have businesses that work with us and certainly the municipalities. And, uh, I was mentioning that we have, you know, we do a lot of large format printing for all the departments, uh, laminating. And, uh, I guess that's what I'd like to leave you with is that the county has made a, a big investment in all of this data and G I S and, uh, it's really what lets us make the best use side of all this, brings the most value from all of that. So if, and if you have any questions, any actions? I guess not, but it's so very interesting. Thank you, Mark and Jason and Brad.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask that Eric can take a photo before we discuss after your, like, one three reports because we're not gonna be honest with souvenir for those of us who are leaving, would you? No, just with your phone.
Yes.
Well, when I, when I adjourn, I'd like to have one too. I've got one, I got my own. So I just gotta get on Facebook. Um, for my report, I don't really have anything because it is getting pretty late. It's towards lunch hour. I just wanna thank all of you outgoing supervisors again, for your great work you did for all of us in Willpac County. And, uh, I'll go, one of the things was, I think we had a couple of supervisors to be here that are here. Thanks for coming and taking the spin. And, uh, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meetings. Emotionally here. Emotion, I. Period, period, period. To adjourn.